Last, last meeting she they they only broadcast like last 10 minutes is all she got.
Did you catch that Steve?
Yeah, if you go on Facebook on the Cantha page, it should all be there. She might have just tuned in at that point, but it should all be there.
Okay. You got five thirty Mel, you ready? Good evening, everybody. It's five thirty one and we will call the city council meeting for April nineteenth, twenty twenty two to order. Those present will stand and pledge allegiance. Good evening, everybody. Tonight online currently is council member Doyleco and council member emerges online and he's actually walking across from the bank to City Hall. Those here in City Hall or myself, Councilwoman Cooley, Councilman Howard, Deputy Clerk Froum Felter, Colette Anderson from Great West Engineering, Melody from the Cantha, Phil Spectol and Rich Luskey. So first thing we'll do tonight is open up our public hearing on our updated water P E R and Colette, you are fine sitting there as long as Steve can hear you and we're good.
Okay. So if everybody got a handout, I'm just gonna kind of flip or go through that handout and this is kind of a follow up with any of you who are in attendance at our public meetings we did over the last couple of years. We talked a lot about the water project in the last primary engineering report that we wrote. And so this is kind of building on that for the next phases of improvement. Just to support additional funding applications. So the first slide is just talking about why we're here. So the city has obviously identified additional water system needs. Trying to get a very aging water system kind of all up to date. So I'm going to talk about the preliminary engineering report, environmental assessment we completed and then open it up for questions and comments. So a preliminary engineering report is basically a technical analysis of that evaluates the existing conditions of whatever infrastructure we're looking at. In this case, the water system identifies any deficiencies that may exist and develops alternatives, alternative solutions to address the deficiencies. And so part of the preliminary engineering report also develops cost estimates for what it might take to meet the necessary improvements. And then identifies potential funding sources. So the city has been very successful the past few years in securing multiple grants. And so we're trying to just kind of continue to build on that effort. There's a lot of money out there for infrastructure right now. So we're just trying to put the city in the best place to take advantage of some of that funding that becomes available. As I said, we like to take a look at the environmental impacts that may incur as a result of some of the improvements. And then this document will actually support the applications to the the various funding agencies. And then of course, just list the public comment. Um, so I've also spent a ton of time on any of this, but we look at the planning area, which is generally the city limits and kind of adjacent areas that may be developed in the future. Look at what the existing population is and try to sort the population to try to project what kind of growth we might see in the city. And the primary purpose of that is just to make sure that any future improvements are designed to aggravate that growth so that you're not putting in a you know, six inch pipe when you really need a ten inch pipe and you don't have to come back five years from now to replace it. So we're just trying to to do the appropriate level of planning to to set you guys up for the long term. And so looking at each component of your water system, there's the water supply. You guys have several wells infiltration gallery out there by the the Rickum wells is what it's referred to. And then there's the other waterworks well, which isn't, isn't used all that often. In this phase one project where that's actually probably going to start bidding this year, which I'll talk a little bit more about throughout this presentation, but there's handouts up here too, if you'd like to follow.
Okay.
Thanks. So one of, one of the issues the city has identified and passes the need for an additional redundant source. Because the way it's all connected right now, something will be enough like the Rickum well where to get contaminated, it's possible that the waterworks well could also have that same contamination and then the town would be out of water. So we're looking at alternative locations for a redundant source. The other big issue, the other thing we look at with the water supply is the amount of water pumped into the system versus the amount of water that's actually metered. The difference between those two numbers being unaccounted for water, which can show it was actually a pretty large number. So on average, the pumped flow is about two hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day. And the meter juice is around one hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day on average. We looked at several years with the data to kind of come up with those averages. But we do base demands, you know, the amount of water we need to be able to produce on the pump flow data because whether it's actually being used or lost, you know, into the ground, it does represent what needs to be pumped into the system to meet the average state demands. And so Montana D E Q Department Environmental Quality likes to see that you can meet the maximum day demands with your largest well out of service. So currently you guys are doing okay on that, but when you look at growth and projected flows, you fall a little bit short. So that we get the water supply will also help address that issue. There's a little graph in there that just shows the difference between the pumped flow and the the metered flow. And like I said, the difference there is the unaccounted for water. So that was our big focus in the P E R a couple of years ago that we did. And we're getting ready to do a large water project that will replace a lot of the old steel mains that kind of built pitfalls over time. So that will help some with that unaccounted for water. This is the goal. And then we look at the distribution system is another major component of your water system. So your existing water system is comprised primarily of these, you know, actually a combination of these, asbestos cement pipe, cast iron pipe, ducted liner. And then there's some PVC throughout there too, the ranging diameter to twelve inches. You know, some of that pipe is in the ground over a hundred years old. So much beyond its typical design life and that's why, you know, we're starting to look at replacing some of that. And then of course, there's deep valves, hydrants, water service lines, water meters. All of those are also kind of replaced as part of the overall distribution system improvements project. The service lines are replaced up to the property lines, but beyond that is, you know, becomes the responsibility of the homeowner. So it's difficult to get water loss all the way down because oftentimes the meters are inside the homes. And the homeowners are responsible for the service lines between the curb stop, between the property line and the meter. And so they're not getting charged for the water that's lost in that portion of the service line, but it's not the city's responsibility to repair those sections of service lines. So there's not a real motivation to to get those replaced. So that becomes a little bit challenging. So even when the city replaces all the distribution system, they have a pretty tight system. There's still a good chance there's going to be some water loss in the system because not every homeowner is probably going to go through a different service line. So lots of things to consider. So the issues in the distribution, obviously water loss, I've hit on that a lot, fire protection. So as the upgrade the pipes increases sizes, you can see how you get better hydraulics, better fire flow throughout the system, which offers, you know, better protection and improved public health and safety throughout the entire community. I think the biggest issue is just simply that the system is aging and it's time, time to update it. And then the other thing that this P E R really focuses on, this updated P E R focuses on more so than the last P E R is that there are several areas of town that are within city limits that still are supplied by private wells. And so the city is looking at extending the public water system to those areas. You know, there's some areas you guys are probably all familiar with that were issued of oil over a couple of years ago due to some floodings, overwhelming sewer system, the constant sewer backups. And it really can have, can have an adverse impact on the, on water quality in areas like that. And so getting people connected to the public system will offer some protection from things of that nature as well. And then the other major component of your system is the storage facility. So you guys have two storage tanks that are also not surprisingly very old. One was built in nineteen twelve and one was built in nineteen forty five. So you have seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons total of storage capacity. So we like to see, we, it's recommended, industry standard, maybe to to have storage capacity and the amount of your average day demands plus the fire flow. So oftentimes you try to offer fire flow, we want to see like twenty five hundred gallons per minute for two hours, you know, in areas like where the school is, for example. And so you add that to your average day demand and then that tells you what you need for your storage capacity. And so based on projected flows, it looks like it's somewhere around eight hundred, eight hundred and ten thousand gallons. So we're just a little bit shy at that. For existing conditions, your capacity is sufficient. The big issue with the storage tanks is simply that they're very old. There have been some leaks, mikes, your public works director does suspect there's some leaking going up on up around the tank that he has been unable to locate despite some significant efforts. So you know, there, there's some options, you know, to align or to try to repair those things that are something like one hundred years old that makes sense just to put in a new structure. So in summary, kind of the deficiencies identified, like I said, is the aging system, the water loss that increases the potential for backflow events of contamination to your water, which of course we want to try to avoid. There's less sites, we can include ground storage tank sites throughout the community that makes the system more susceptible to contamination. The private wells we talked about and then of course the storage capacity. So in this type of project, those types of deficiencies are identified. Really the solutions are very simple. It's you either replace it with new infrastructure or you do nothing. And so the only one you know, that really has, you know, pipe, it's just new pipe, right? There's not a whole bunch of different like technical alternatives to evaluate. With the tanks, there are different types of tanks. And so we look at that and usually it comes down to which one is the most economical price usually plays the biggest role in those because these days those tanks, as far as operation maintenance goes, the glass line tanks and the concrete tanks, you know, both of them are pretty simple in terms of operation and maintenance. So so we looked at a new water supply well, the distribution system improvements, the additional storage capacity and then extending the system to those areas of town served by private wells. And so what we did, this map here, there's a copy of there if anybody didn't get one. But basically all of those alternatives are in the best interest of the town, the town, the city, you know, and working with the mayor and public works director, you know, they've identified that, identified them all as being important and necessary. And so we've kind of developed a phased approach because doing all of that at one time becomes pretty cost prohibitive. And so if we can phase it into some different projects, that allows us to take advantage of some additional funding cycles and put some additional grant dollars towards the project. So a lot of the alternatives analysis and we're comparing them and trying to rank them against each other really just comes down to cost. So there's a little table in one of the sheets there on your presentation that says alternatives analysis. And that just shows you the main difference, the main comparison really is between the tanks. We looked at a glass lined steel tank versus a welded steel tank versus a concrete tank. The concrete tank is the most expensive when it comes to capital costs, but it's also the simplest when it comes to O N M. There's no recoding of the tank. There's just not a lot to be done to a concrete tank over time, which obviously your guys has served you over a hundred years. So they, they last a while. Glass lined steel tank is similar in O N M. It's the glass is actually fused to the steel panels in the factory. And so there's no recoding. It has very long life expectancy versus a welded tank, which is a little higher in capital cost than a steel, oh, a glass line tank, but also, you know, every ten to twenty years, you're going to have to come in and sand last the coating off of the used tank to recoat it, which can be very expensive. So life cycling, life cycle cost, that one usually loses out. So and then the other ones are just the various different sections that are highlighted on this map of distribution system improvements. And we can kind of walk through some of those. So this map highlights it based on the phases. So that was developed based on some priorities, working closely with the staff here at the city. And so the phase one project is already designed. It's already funded. Grants, everything is in place. We're just, the, the design is actually at D E Q for review and approval. We hope to have that approval soon. Doesn't seem like anything's moving too quickly these days, but once we have those approvals in place, we have to have that project out for bid in June would be kind of a goal. That might be a lofty goal at this point, but that's what we're looking for. And then
Set the bar high.
Yeah. So once we have that bidding, then, you know, we'll see with contractors, schedules contractors are getting very busy. So we'll aiming for kind of a false start, we kind of follow the soup of project that's going right now. And that phase one project is kind of the lunch highlights on this map. And so in the area where they're building sewer project right now, which I'm sure you've all had the pleasure of driving through. We're going to, that's one area that's in the phase one water distribution improvements project. And then there's an area over by the school. And then it also constructs a new well and a redundant transmission made to both this side of town and all the way up to the tank. So there will be kind of two. If something happens to like your existing transmission that comes down from the tank, the whole town will be out of water, will have a redundant path for the tank to continue to feed water to the town. So that is what makes up the phase one project. And in addition to that, as kind of a separate piece, the city has ordered new water meters. So they'll be replacing all of the existing water meters. So that project will hopefully start construction later this year. So the next, so there's four phases total that have been identified. The next priority is phase two, which is replacing the tank. Not much more to say about that one other than getting new tank. And we're looking at replacing both of them with just one larger tank, this kind of thousand gallon tank somewhere around that. And then the third phase would be, well, on the tank, I guess we're looking at maybe the glass lined steel tank alternative because it's the most cost effective and but a lot of times what we'll do is we'll put a stack together for both like a concrete tank and the glass line steel tank and let people bid it both ways. And then the city can see how those bids come in and wherever that falls in their budget, they can make a decision as to, as to what the, you know, the money is, what the funding is like. The third phase is extending the water system to a couple areas of town. One section in the northeast area of town and one section in the south areas of town. It's kind of in a purple highlighted color. These yellow highlighted lots are areas that are currently on private wells. And so the water system would be extended to users in those areas. And so it offers the opera, you know, we would have to get user agreements in place with every property in order that would be affected in order to connect a service line on their private property, but it would give those property owners an opportunity during this part of the construction project to have that service line installed as part of the, the project and not have to, you know, pay for it on their own down the road. And so that, that would be a benefit for, for users at that time. And then the fourth phase of the project, not that it's any less important, but it's the main avenue line here, just three line that comes in along Main Avenue through town. It's not, it's not phase four simply because it's not important. It's more a coordination effort with M D T. So they have plans several years down the road. I think the last day here was twenty twenty seven, maybe.
I've used it down the road.
Yeah, keep going. Yeah. So it's a while now where they're going to come through and do that, redo the highway eventually. So we're just kind of staying in touch with M D, M D T and we'll coordinate those efforts so that we're only tearing up Main Street one time happily. So, so that's, that phase is kind of just, it's there if needed, but it's kind of on hold until that M D T project is developed. So then I get into the preferred alternative. I've already kind of told you what all the different phases are. So the estimated, the phase one construction, estimated project cost is seven foot six million. We have a funding package already in place for that. It's about seventy four percent grant funded. So we have multiple different grants for that. And then a U S D A world development loan is the one component of that project, about two million dollars. So there is a rate increase plan for that project. It's, you know, I have seven to ten dollars. I think that actually estimated like six dollars and eighty cents or something like that, but that's, that's what we're, we're looking at right now for that loan. But I think the city will be, they're already kind of working on that with their bond council and determining what that's going to look like. I think the goal here on any of these rate increases is the city's trying to make that as as painless as possible. I mean, there's a financial impact when it comes to infrastructure improvements. So we're just trying to minimize that to the extent possible, but trying to maybe implement any necessary rate increases incrementally rather than, you know, just all at one time. So we kind of phase them in a little bit. Sometimes that's a little bit easier to to adjust to for, for people throughout the community. So this P E R then, so that's the, the phase one alternative. So this P E R, the preferred project that we will be applying for funding for, for phases two and three. And so the total project cost for that is a little bit higher than phase one. It's about seven point seven million dollars. We're looking at applying for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant through the D N R C program, six hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant through the Montana coal endowment program, and then through U S D A world development, we're being asking for two million, maybe more dollar grant than there'd be a lot of local contribution and then an arguing law of about four and a half million. So this rate increase estimated is a little bit larger. It's around sixteen dollars a month. And again, this is multiple years down the road. So this construction would, we wouldn't be looking at construction until later in twenty, in twenty twenty four. And so right now we're just trying to get funding in place for it.
But can you reiterate which phase this is for?
This is for phases two and three.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, part of the discussions that we've had with city staff so far, you know, rate increases and whatnot is that sometimes those numbers look big and they are big and they're, you know, it is a significant financial impact to users. But it also, you know, when you look at the time value of money, it's nothing ever gets less expensive, unfortunately. So the longer we wait, the more inflation will drive these costs up. And ultimately, you know, these products are needed. The other thing that we're trying to set the city up for, I kind of alluded to it earlier, is that right now there's more money out there for infrastructure, at least I mean in my career as an engineer that I've ever seen. And there's another infrastructure bill that's potentially around the three of the CARES Act, the ARPA funding that has been, you know, nothing's been set in stone, but there's been promises about it. So there's, you know, some potential grant opportunities that may present themselves that I don't have factor into this. And of course, we're, we're, we're tracking all of that. We want to be prepared. And so we'll you know, if that opportunity arises, having this plan in place puts the city in a really good position to which is a big reason why for phase one, you guys got the, the two million dollar ARPA grant is because you were, you were already kind of ahead of game. You had your company engineering report in place. You know, we were well down the path of being ready for these improvements. And so we're trying to kind of take the same approach here is to be ready so that if these funding opportunities present themselves, we can take advantage of them. So it's possible that funding package could change for the better for the city. But right now I'm kind of trying to present the worst case scenario. I have, you know, I think eight percent inflation on these cost estimates. I have twenty percent or more contingency on these cost estimates, just because it's really difficult to estimate, you know, with supply chain issues and things like that. So, you know, I'm trying to be as conservative as I can be, but still realistic. So I'm trying to balance that a little bit right now. So um, so with that, I don't know if anybody of him kind of rambling on, maybe he has questions of specifics of what those projects look like. Otherwise I would just jump into the governmental assessments.
So can I jump in here for a second? And I want the folks to understand that part of the reason we have to go back and update this P E R was because in our original application that was supposed to be funded at the larger amount before it got cut back to two million. Part of these projects were approved, but since they were an approved project, they could not be resubmitted. So we have to go back and change the project, which requires us to go back through a P and another P E R and go back to square one. So people can understand why I was as frustrated as I was and why I was as vocal as I was with the governor's office in my conversations with the chief of staff about us losing, you know.
Millions.
Yeah, originally we had, I believe it was for five point eight million, you have the ARPA grants. And that was allowed when we submitted the application, but right in the middle of all the rankings, they determined or decided they made the decision to only allow two million dollars per project. And so you guys ranked very well.
We were eleven.
They awarded the five point eight million, but then they cut it all back to two million per community or per project. And so we had to greatly reduce the scope of the project.
And if I remember right, in our original, we had the extending the water system.
We did, yeah. And so I think it was like a twelve million dollar project.
Yes, it was.
So now you can see, I mean, that's turned into a fourteen, fifteen million dollar project simply by, because now it's extended.
In a twelve month period of time.
So, so yeah, that's, that's a good point, Chris. And somebody's
Yep, I've got a question for you, Colette. So for the unfunded phases of these projects with acknowledging that this is pure prognostication, considering that, you know, there's a lot more folks who are on the ball because of ARPA, because of CARES, because of all the new money that's coming out. All these towns are kind of gearing up the same way that Chodo has been for the past few years. What do you foresee our, what is the word I'm trying to say? What, what do you see as our ability to get like tap into funds? And our competitiveness, that's the word I was looking for, our competitiveness down the line.
Yeah. Um, you know, I think it's only going to be more competitive, but the thing right now is there's also, so like the big grant in here is the Montana coal endowment program. That's funded through coal tax funds. So last cycle, we ended up using all the ARPA money to fund that program. And so there's going to be more money in that program, I believe, than there has been in the past. So there's been past cycles, the last couple of cycles, they've actually funded every application. So I think, you know, of any cycle, this is a really good time to put in a project, even if it's not all that competitive based on their ranking criteria. So M set just, that one focuses on public health and safety. You know, the, a lot of times like wastewater projects will score really high on that. It's like, there's E. coli and people can get sick or if you have a water quality issue, people are drinking contaminated water that will rank very well. So, you know, I, I don't know, but your guys' project, when you look at things like that, you know, is going to be as competitive as some of those other ones that could have such a direct impact to public health. But it's still a good project and it's still a necessary project. And and every community is dealing with aging infrastructure. I think right now there's so much money out there that they very well fund every project again, I guess is where I was going with that because they're they're going to have the coal tax funds. And I don't know if they might put more ARPA money towards it too. I'm not sure.
Perfect. Thanks, Colette.
You bet.
A lot of it's going to play out in the legislature, Steve, unfortunately.
No question. That's what I say. It's, it's purely prognostication at this point. Like it's, it's a, it's a throw, you may as well throw a dart, a dartboard to guess. And I acknowledge that, but
But the world favors the prepared and
That's exactly right.
That in our last application process.
Well, and we, we learned a lot going through the process of getting a sewage treatment plan. I mean, it was, it was a ten plus year project because, or process because we never ducks in a room. And it changed and changed and changed and changed because we didn't know. We didn't have the information. We hadn't done any work upfront. And so with, with this one, I mean, it's some big dollars, but it's, it also, it needs to happen. The high water events last couple of years have proved that the but, but we also, we're in a better we're a better place now because it's identified because we've we've got, Colette, you working with us, but we've also submitted the project as a whole. And so it's already been there and we already know that the state thinks, hey, that's a good idea. So, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I kind of miss this. The new groundwater supply source. So is that going to be like another well in that area where like the waterworks or?
We're going to do a different, we're looking for a new location. We have a specific, we have a preliminary location kind of identified just because we had to in order to put a cost together. But we're evaluating that. We're actually in the process of getting, having your geologic assessment. We're going to meet with D E Q to get some of their feedback on. So that's going to be kind of a, you know, you look at the, it's part of the phase one project, but it's kind of a one A, one B project. So we're looking at building that well in a new location. So it's not susceptible to the same thing. So if you have issues with your other wells, you know, you have, this one is still going to be reliable. So.
So hold on, the coming in councilman merge has joined us here at City Hall and so has ex councilwoman Jill Owen and ask who's the questions are coming from out there on Facebook land. Okay.
Thank you.
Jill, the floor is yours again.
I was trying to remain a nun. Um, I thought you wouldn't recognize.
Yeah, there you go.
You should have taken your glasses off.
The do red gave you one. The Do Red gave you one.
Um, the other question I had.
As you're looking, Jill, I would tell you that the new well will be east of Spring Creek. It'll be on that side of the grid.
Yeah, because the others are, yeah. And then the other question was about or, oh, no. So the alternative that is expanding the water lines. So there's no water lines over in that whole northeast that's got, it's pink or whatever color.
There's a couple, but not nearly enough. Um, I'll reiterate again, one hundred and forty nine homes and nine businesses in the town that have city sewer but do not have city water.
Right, but that, this extension, there's also people that aren't in that extension that are from city water.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know that this covers everything.
It does not. It would cover the greatest majority of them, because there are people within the city limits that have access to city water with a hydrant in their yard, but do not have city water.
Oh, I wonder who that might be. Um.
Rich?
Um, oh, the other question is in the, oh, yeah, in the alternatives or the funding where you break down all the funding. So is local contribution to, from the taxes?
It's, it's from the city's reserve fund. So, yeah, part of your rates and charges that you guys pay is also used to build up a reserve account for the city. And so those are complete ballpark figures. We will make that number as low as possible, but because you guys are using World Development funding, one of their requirements, they have a magic formula. And they look at the cash you have in the bank and what your expenses are, and they work the magic and they say you have to contribute this much. So we've tried to estimate what we think that might be, but that number, I think, is going to be a little high, because like for this project, you guys are contributing half a million dollars. So for the phase one project. And so this four hundred thousand, they estimate, doesn't take into account, but that's going to reduce significantly the amount of money on the day. You're also between now and then going to pay off some debt, so I don't have that factored in. So there's a number of things that, you know, are going to be very different two years from now, where you go to actually finalize the funding package. Um, so this is kind of a conservative investment.
And it's not, it's not a one-time check, the four hundred grand, like, the project we have going on right now, the dollars we're spending to rent equipment to bypass sewer lines right now, those are dollars that we can use as city dollars as contributions into our, into our project rather than cash.
Yeah, and on the water side, they, yeah, that's what that is. And on the water side, you guys, I mean, the, the city paid for all the engineering upfront, so we have, we're in a great position. We have plans, you know, design nearly done when this ARPA funding came out. And so that got you guys some more points on the grant for this too, so.
And then the, like, the estimated rate increase, um, that's to the water, that would be on the water. And then is that seven to ten dollars a month? Okay, and that actually could be affected by, well, no, wind, okay. As I say, once you have new users.
The more users we have, the less the.
Less everybody has to pay, yeah, yeah.
That's the, that's my view on the matter, yes.
Right, no, yeah.
And anything we can do to get people out there now that are in those situations that have access to city water that don't have it. I don't want you to have city water to water your yard with. I really don't. I mean, you can do that, but city water, I would like to have everybody on city water so their sewer bills could be billed monthly, because technically what your city water bill is, should be your city sewer bill. So if you're an average of thirty five dollar a month water bill, you shouldn't be paying fifty dollars or fifty one dollars a month in sewer bill. I would like to see that all paid, and I still think in Phyllis's world, the day is going to come where if you live inside an incorporated city to town, when you go to refinance your home, the bank's going to say, I'm not going to refinance it unless you're hooked into city water.
Well, you can't get a hang phone if you don't have city water.
If you have, if you have a cased well, you still can through certain lending agencies, but more and more, it's getting harder.
Yeah.
Sorry, Colette.
Any other things that you'd like to discuss? Also, the last part is really quick. Um, I mentioned we've gone through a couple times, something agencies require that we go through. So we write a letter and I send them through that, but it says all the areas we're going to dig up around town or disturb. Yeah, the concerns from our environmental perspective. So one of the slides there, and I, I send letters to all kinds of different agencies. And so far, we've received responses from the N R C, the county, most related to floodplains, federal highway, usually doesn't have anything to say other than you're an N B T, work with N B T. As well, like, uh, state historic preservation, they do a cultural resource inventory, things like that. If we disturb any buildings over fifty years, you know, or we find any artifacts when we're digging, things of that nature, there's some, some processes to follow, but these types of projects usually don't have a lot of impact on any of those things. So, um, so, yeah, we've collected a lot of responses already. None of them are of any significance on any of these projects. And so we've been trying that, even the, the simple environmental assessment is sufficient for this type of work and more in detail with our impact statement is not necessary.
Hypothetically, difference between E A and E I S dollar wise?
So honestly, I've never actually done the I S, because the projects we, we do have.
Let's not be the first.
I mean, some projects do have a much greater impact, but these types of projects were, I mean, really were disturbing areas that are already disturbed. So, um, somebody did all the damage a long time before any of us were, were around.
Might that change with the new water tank?
Um.
It shouldn't.
It shouldn't, because we're looking at building right there adjacent to those existing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on that, if we were, say, building that on a new piece of land that was like prime farmland, that is a little bit more, that we probably have to go through a more extensive environmental process.
Okay.
And there's more environmental work that gets done than just this too. This is kind of the minimum that the funding agencies require at this stage in the game. World Development, we actually need a very extensive environmental report where we have to write, it's, I mean, I can send it to you guys, it's good read, but it's a much more detailed report that we had to do for World Development. So we do take it seriously, but these types of projects is just in your digging areas that have already been dug up. So it's not, it typically doesn't cause any issues.
So I know you don't know details on this yet, but so the new water tank would go next to where the existing ones are and it would be one that would be giant, much bigger, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be.
And then all of those would be taken out?
At some point in time, I'm sure they would, yes.
Yeah.
You would have used them or keep them just for?
Potentially, that would be, I mean, I think that we would consider that during design and work with probably Mike and the city and just.
I could see the one being used as an elevated tee box for the number eight, you know, number eight hole at the country club, but other than that, I don't know.
Well, that we might be required to fill them in.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, we just built a new one in Cascade to replace their two concrete tanks last year. And, um, you know, the operator wanted to keep his old ones, it's like bunkers. So they're disconnected from the system because, I see, they're not connected to the system at all anymore.
But like, what if you, what if you needed more storage capacity, couldn't you use them again? Or not really?
Well, we'd have to maintain.
Yeah, probably the reason you're building a new tank is because those ones are kind of ready to be taken out at service. So, um, yeah, and, and the capacity that we're looking at should be sufficient.
Should be.
On the water tanks, and I don't want to, if it's, this is too in the nitty gritty and we can talk about it later. Is it possible to do waiting on the kind of longer lasting, uh, more durable side of thing, you know, you're talking about the cement tanks, going to have a longer life than, uh, any of the steel stuff? Uh, based on our past performance and see a shot on maintenance of infrastructure, uh, that's certainly a consideration for me. Is this too in the weeds or is this something to talk about now?
No, this is great. So I did, you know, I do rank them, um, and I go through and develop kind of the decision matrix. And that certainly is something that factors into the lifecycle cost analysis. I think I always give up the concrete tanks a hundred year life and I give the glass line tanks like maybe a seventy year life or something, seventy five year life, somewhere in there. Um, and so the, the concrete tank where it gets tough is where you have to balance it is just the capital cost is quite a bit higher. So, um, it works out to where economically the concrete tanks, even when you look at the twenty year present worth value, it's typically more expensive. But as you approach that million gallon range, and sometimes you can get a pretty good deal on the concrete tank, which is why we often will put out a spec for a steel tank and a concrete tank and bid it both ways. And then you can decide what bids in, you know, so maybe it's a hundred thousand dollars more and you go like, oh, it's totally worth spending an extra hundred thousand dollars. Let's, that's Cascade only did a two hundred thousand gallon tank and we did it both ways and they ended up doing concrete tank. It was the more expensive option, but for the exact same reason you just mentioned. I mean, they've had concrete for a hundred and fifteen years, you know, why would they want to do anything different?
Our existing tanks average ninety two and a half years old. One is a hundred and ten years old and the other one is seventy seven years old.
Yeah, and what kind are, are existing ones or they? They're concrete.
They're concrete, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's definitely something to consider. And I think that's why in this P E R, I don't really say, you know, we selected the steel tanks simply because the cost is less. And if it comes down to financials and that's all you have in your budget, it's a great tank, it's going to last a long time, it's low maintenance. But I still leave it open to, to do the concrete tank, you know, if the budget allows.
Thank you.
Have a fundraiser or something, bake sale.
Cookies.
So the last couple of slides there are just schedules. Um, I've already kind of alluded to them both, but phase one, we're going to hopefully starting to build this year. So we have gotten as far as we can go and now we're just kind of waiting on and that's the pipe portion of the project. So as I mentioned, the supply and the new transmission main will follow that. And so we're working, we're actually trying to set up a meeting with D E Q right now to start kind of discussing that. And so that will probably be built next year, but it'll be kind of be in the works this year. And then this phase two and three project, it goes, the, all the funding is tied to the legislature. So there are the applications are due in May. Then the Department of Commerce and D N R C and everybody ranks them. Over the fall, we'll probably get the preliminary rankings in the late fall. And then the legislature is in session in January and then I'll be calling Chris to come to Helena and testify on behalf of your project. And then hopefully the legislature will recommend it for funding. And then we usually get those awards in May, so that would be May of next year. And then the funds are usually available around July, takes a couple of months to get the contracts in place. Um, once the funds are available, we'll dive right into design, design it that summer. You know, get approvals and be ready to bid at the end of twenty twenty three, the first part of twenty twenty four. And so it would be a project constructed in twenty twenty four. So if all of this is planned, sometimes there are some little delays that pop up that we just have to figure out as we go, but that's kind of the, the tentative schedule. So that, that's really all I have to talk about on that project. If anybody has any questions or comments, um.
Leave it to the plumber, Councilor Howard.
Off the wall question. When you're doing this competitive bidding, are you required to accept a little bid?
No, not necessarily. We have, um, it can, you know, it's all about weighing risk. And so, you know, it's like you risk, are you going to get sued at the beginning by disqualifying somebody for whatever reason? Or are you going to go through a horrible construction project and end up in a lawsuit anyways because you're fighting the whole time? So I think that when we, um, when we do the competitive bids, we do have qualification requirements. And then we do check references. And so if somebody doesn't have the experience or their references don't check out, which we reference checks that everybody's probably done, how many gives you that references rate? But, um, or if we've had like specific personal experience, like if, you know, if there's certain contractors, tractors that I've had projects on that I was like, I could never recommend a word to them because of specific experiences. So there are certainly, um, they need many considerations that we can make in order to try to protect you guys. It's not easy to throw out a little bidder, but if they don't meet the qualifications and whatnot, it can be done. And we have that before. I would just, you know, in that instance, encourage you guys to work with your legal counsel, get there and put on it.
Mel, Phyllis, Rich, Jill, anything?
And so I guess with that, if anybody's willing to write a letter of support for the project, those always strengthen the application. And so I've been trying to get, you know, the, the city staff to, um, you know, reach out to the public. If you guys know people who would be willing to write letters of support. If you have anybody who has, you know, direct experience with being placed on a boil order with their private well, who, you know, thought that was a scary experience and loves the opportunity to hook up, you know, some things like that, but document that, that type of thing in the community. Just helps increase the competitiveness of your applications.
Do you want individual letters or could I do a boilerplate letter?
Individual letters are better.
Have that.
Yeah, we've had, and we have had boilerplate letters, we've had petitions, but, um, I think it just means a little more.
Oh, I agree.
Very simple, it could be handwritten on a sticky note, it does not have to be typed, it doesn't have to be fancy. It could be an email, you could hand out my email address if somebody wants to shoot me an email. You know, that's perfectly fine.
And those need to cut, those should come to you.
Yeah, as you guys collect them, if you want to get them to Jovi or Tom or somebody and just have them scan them all over to me. And we'll, we have a section in our applications and we'll put those inserted. And the more community support the funding agencies see that that is one of the, one of the ranking criteria, so it helps.
I'll just touch base from the chamber perspective on that.
There you go. Sounds good. Nothing else? I can close our public hearing on our updated P E R.
Do you need a motion for that or is that just by action?
Just by action, I can do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Colette. You're free to go southwestern. Let you guys know that Clerk Rogers has joined us from a previous meeting and is in the room now, so.
Jody's in the house.
I need your signatures on this one and last one, same with you too. Um, next item would be approval of our minutes from, uh, five April.
I move approve the minutes.
I have a motion from Councilman D and a second from Councilwoman Cottoli. Any changes or additions to the minutes? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Out of state, you going fishing there, Councilman Howard? Out of state, you lucky dog. Between now and the, when, not between, between now and the next meeting?
A third through the ninth.
Okey dokey. We'll address that later. So Councilman Howard, it will be gone May three through May ninth.
It'll be done May third through the.
Thank you.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay. Councilwoman Cottoli's going to take six more days than you are. We have nothing under our old business. First item under our new business would be the vote on resolution eighty three, which is our environmental assessment approval, which is what was part of this project.
I move approval of resolution eighty three.
I have a motion from Councilman D and a second from Councilman Cottoli. Again, this is just a resolution to approve the environmental assessment, which was part of our preliminary engineering report. Goes into our application and goes from there. So you can see in the report who's commented, who hasn't commented, we've had no adverse comments.
Mr. Mayor, if, am I recalling correctly that on the first round, we communicated with the tribes on these impacts, not environmentally, but uh, for like archaeological stuff, did, I saw B I A was listed. Did we reach out this time as well?
Oh, yes, the one that, they was, the one that had not signed off on the first one was the first one to sign off on this one.
Perfect.
No phone calls were made even.
There you go.
So, no, as, um, as far as I know, everybody that signed up on the previous one now has signed up on this one and we've got no, there's no outstanding issues. And it goes back to what Colette said, all of this ground is previously excavated ground, so.
Yep.
I think.
Call the question. Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? We will get that signed and taken care of in the morning. Our next resolution is to adopt the updated water P E R, which is what Colette just walked us through.
I move approval of.
Her time.
Yeah.
I move approval of resolution eighty four.
Second.
I have a Councilman D and a second from Councilman Merja. Anybody out there, Jill, Phyllis? Rich? Mel, questions on that? I think Colette's very thorough.
Working with Great West has been one of the best decisions we've made as a community.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm tickled pink that we're, we are, for lack of a better word in government, we're proactive. We're going to, whether we get it or not, our ducks are going to be there and ready to go. So those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We, resolution eighty four is adopted and will get signed tomorrow.
Just a comment as, as the council member who's been on through these projects, through the sewer project, this is a lot smoother because we do have our ducks in a room. No, it's. No, it's fine, it's going to be fine, because, because we do have our ducks in a row, because, because the planning has happened upfront.
Yes.
And that's, that's what I tried to say when Colette was here, but it's, it's been.
And truly, I think that there are communities and counties out there that are gonna be giving back dollars because they didn't have their ducks in a row. They didn't have a project ready to go, they were not engineered, and if we can be there again waiting, some of those dollars could very well triple to us. And ease our local impacts, so.
And we will have to be ready because there is deadlines, money can be spent, so if we are ready. We will be high up on the list because there is, has to be committed by two twenty twenty four and has to be spent by twenty twenty six, and that is a hard deadline, that's what I'm right now.
Yeah.
So being ready is a good thing.
Um, we did vote on that, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Resolution eighty five to authorize the submission of the M C F application, M C F is the Montana Cold Endowment Program, previously known as the Treasure State Endowment Program. Uh, we did, we were successful in receiving one last year, although as Colette said, it was funded by ARPA dollars, so in the last legislative session. They spent zero money out of the coal trust. It was all replaced with ARPA dollars, with government dollars rather than federal dollars rather than state dollars, so. As we look at the next legislative session coming up. There's some things to think about, so I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilman Merja, I need a second.
Second.
Councilman D, um. I, I don't wanna get in trouble, but we have, these are things we think about when we go to the voting booth. Because these are the people that we send to Helena are the ones that hold a great deal of our dollars in, in their hands when it comes to local infrastructures. And as much as I hate to say it, you guys, it is not a Democrat versus Republican world, it is a urban versus a rural world. And us out here, we may consider where we live to be very nice, and we have all the amenities. But to someone who lives in Billings or one of the other big seven, we live in the sticks, and that's why I was thankful that they all came here for our.
The mayor's or council.
Our executive forums to give them a chance to see that, you know, hey, you do have, we have big town, big time, big city issues in a small town setting, so. Questions, public, anybody from the council? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, we'll get that one signed and get ready to submit as well. Our next item would be an application for the July third, twenty twenty two street closure for across the street for the uh, American Legion.
Move approval of the application.
I have a motion from Councilman D. The second from Councilman Howard. This is the. I wanna make sure I have my streets and avenues correct, so I don't get scolded. What's that, First Avenue?
First Avenue.
Before St. Avenue Northwest, yes. Um, and their times for doing so are six P M to two A M. The night of the third through two A M, the morning of the fourth.
So this is moving the street dance back to outside the Legion?
Yes, they believe it's easier for them to control the situation.
They've got a pretty good plan.
Yeah, they've told that they technically will not be selling outside.
That's correct.
Signing through a window.
They will take.
They've got a much better plan.
Yes, significantly better plan. Um, now it says six P M, but I know that they're also having a paid event that afternoon at the rodeo grounds, so. By guessing while they're wrapping up down there, the band and such will be setting up up here to be ready to go when they're done. And I'm sure the fire department will be getting, receive their notifications, et cetera. That's the sheriff's office, well.
Just a question on a different street closure, you guys going to be doing the K population?
I was wondering that myself. Because we need to submit for the proposal too.
There's a new chief, he can handle.
We'll push, we'll, I'll reach out and find out, Steve, he's still.
We got a meeting on a month of this one.
Okay.
Maybe I'll give you one.
Okay.
Okay. Any concerns from the community? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll let the Legion know. Uh, item five is to vote on approved new city fire chief. And take a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Councilman D, a second by Councilman Howard. For those out there, we have, um, I wanna thank Matt Passmore. And I'll come to Councilman Howard here in a second, Matt Passmore for being our fire chief for the last, just shy of five years. Uh, and as crazy as it sounds, even in the volunteer position, the paperwork. And the load that that individual carries is insane, and I wanna thank Matt for standing up and doing it for as long as he did. Uh, Councilman Howard, I wanna thank you for being his assistant chief, and for your time as an assistant chief. The public needs to know that both of these firefighters are still on the firefighter roster, are still there providing their skills, knowledge, and abilities and training to the new folks. And it's a matter of new, new blood coming up, stepping up and walking ten thousand miles in someone's turnouts to see how that job actually truly is. So we received a letter from the fire department asking for requesting that Greg Funk be appointed as the new city Shoto voluntary fire chief, and our new assistant chief is Matt Connect.
So who's the new fire chief?
Greg Funk. Any questions?
I have a question, and this is maybe just a softball for, for Councilman Howard, um, if someone wants to sign up to volunteer for the fire department, who do they talk to? How do they, how do they do it?
Oh, me and any of the fire people or. Every Tuesday, where we meet every Tuesday now, so we have a. Uh, but we have an official training on the first Tuesday.
Hmm.
Or second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
First Tuesday, we just have a work night, and then the third Thursday's a work night, second Tuesday is a training, official training. Then the fourth Tuesday is a business meeting. So you, to show up after you've gone through three trainings, you go on the roster, you're on probation for six months, and then after that. You're just one.
What, what time on Tuesdays?
Um, I'm gonna say seven o'clock, so they, they kind of vary, so our, our work nights, we try to just get started earlier. A- and work nights are just a free for all, you don't have to be there, just come, and somebody wants to do something like, tonight I'm gonna put a carburetor on a generator, so. It's little things that need to be done, we go, we service all the vehicles, we do do some training, the newer guys will do training, older guys, we kind of fix stuff.
It's a familiarity for those people of new to get, see what's happening on all the apparatus, what's where, why, and how.
The meetings are always at seven thirty, the, the training's really varied.
And that's always at the fire hall, correct?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Councilman.
Other question.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, that would, I will let Chief Funk know he will be in to see us later this week. Item six, discussion and vote on May city council meetings, and with Councilman Howard and Councilman, Councilwoman Cottoli being gone and with uh. Institute the first week in May, I would ask that we go two, four in May rather than one, three. So that would give us.
Would we have a quorum? On the tenth, then?
We should.
Will they both be back? Did I have that math wrong?
Yeah, we would, we wouldn't have to listen to Colette, but we'd have the rest of us.
Okay, okay.
So, it just, this would give Mel time to know what's going on and, and not, so.
Do we need a motion for that?
Councilwoman Cottoli said she could zoom in from her, her, her god. Sorry, my pager's going off, this is gonna go off next.
The legislature, that means you buy donuts next time.
May tenth and May.
May tenth and twenty fourth.
Do we need a motion for that, Mister Mayor?
Yes, please.
I move that we, for May twenty twenty two, we hold our meetings on the tenth and twenty fourth.
Second, second from Councilman Merja, Mel, do you foresee any issues with that? Are there, are there school?
School board has changed its May tenth meeting to May ninth.
Is there a concert? I don't wanna get caught with a concert. Councilman Merja.
Their, their concerts are six thirty, because she's in junior high now.
Okay, so, all right, I just didn't wanna get pushed back.
We'll be fine.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I say I don't think there's a concert calendar yet.
Claims.
Right.
I move we pay the claims.
You?
Yeah, I think.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilman D and a second from Councilman Howard. Any questions concerning the claims? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Quick, like run through some reports, um, law enforcement report. No, you did not, it's laid on your desk still. Come on, be quiet, there we go. I'll jump ahead and we'll do Pete, the city court, uh, two criminal cases, two misdemeanor cases, P F F A, minor possession tobacco. A licensed dog issue and a nuisance dog issue. Um, I heard from a couple of dog violators. And I had a couple of conversations with them, it's never an easy conversation, I will be the first to tell you that. Yeah, it was laying on your, on your bureau. So. It's tough, you guys, and one of the, one of them that got cited, that I got pictures of their dog running around again yesterday. And I really, I don't know what to do in Councilman Merja and Councilman Diogues' corner of the world, because that's where it's coming from, um, so.
And I will point out that on the yard sale group, that there was a complaint that people aren't picking up after their dogs as they're walking them on a leash. Um, so this is, we need to maybe think about this more as a broader community issue. Um, than just a couple of stray dogs or a couple of dogs off leash or out of the yard or whatever. We need to maybe put a little bit different thought into this, maybe.
Point of order, our ordinance does not say leased, it says under control.
Correct.
Which. Until a dog misbehaves and won't come back, it is technically under control, which is the, the battle that we fought. I probably ten years, ten years ago, two thousand eleven or twelve, um, it wasn't until the dog that was on fleech wouldn't come that it was considered a nuisance animal, so. Uh, yeah, it's an uphill battle, no matter which way we go.
And they changed the definition of a nuisance dog, what has been changed since, you know, the original ten years, this is what updated, I think, in um, ninety six. To what a nuisance dog is, and so. More and more of these dogs are going to be charged as nuisance animals, and it's a stiffer penalty. It gives the judge the opportunity to uh. Deal with it in a much more harsher situation, and. It's something that wears heavy on me, you guys, and Joey and I have talked about it, you know, at a point when I can wrap my brain around one less thing, I'll. I'll put something on the table for us to consider here at the city when it comes to, to nuisance dogs. Did you find your?
Sorry.
Hold on.
I put it in a safe place, I'm thinking I put it like.
I think I've got, I know I've got it here from when I forwarded it to you.
To me, but I.
Because I know thirty one eight got it to me.
Yeah, it was like four things.
According to thirty one eight Devon Seehose, traffic stops, traffic warnings, local warrant, and two citations, two arrests. Uh, sixty calls in Shoto, in addition to the above listed citations, traffic accidents, traffic stops, officers requesting other calls. In addition to the calls in the, in the near, near surrounding areas as well. And that was for the month of March. Uh, Jennifer's report matches up with the city court, she was the one who issued the citations, she and I commented and talked back and forth on it. And um, one of the citations was actually my name on the citation, asking to have the dog cited. Saying, yes, I'll sign one with the citation, yes, I would go to court if I had to, because I, I had to go take them care of. Um, Mike's report. As you can see in the month of March, we pumped, we produced ten thousand, ten million fifty five thousand six hundred forty eight gallons of water. So three million thirty seven thousand thirty gallons accounted for that amount, lost seventy percent of our water. Now, on a brighter note, we're pumping less than they did in nineteen eighty one. Because we, we, Mike's got all these records back, and, and in nineteen eighty one, in the same month of April, they pumped nineteen million gallons of water and accounted for six.
So this is not a new problem.
No, new, 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 this is a long lasting problem, and um.
I didn't realize it was that long.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't realize it was at least forty years old.
It goes back quite ways, and if you, you saw.
And this is why we're doing water projects.
Exactly, truly it is, and if you saw on our Facebook page, Mel, I was hoping that somewhere we could find a way to get this to the paper. I thank you to Three Rivers. We had a broken wat line over by the, by the pavilion, and Three Rivers came and bored that into us, so we did not have to dig through the creek and make a mess. And wanna thank the Three Rivers crew from the bottom of my heart for coming up and doing that and making it easy. Uh, easier for us, so it improved our services to the pavilion, to the weather beater, and to the park. By allowing us to put in a new line there and um, not have to do any excavation work. We are looking at stretching some additional water lines in the park to the new area where they wanna build another softball field as well, Mike and the guys are in the process of putting that together. Tom, what do you have for us?
Sorry, I got misplaced or.
It's with the sheriff's report.
I never got it to Jody, um, I think that there was like six to eight commits for the month of.
March?
March, including and not limited to um, expansion of Teton County, or no, sorry, not county, Teton Peaks Nursing Home. There.
Second one renovation.
Wing renovation, um, that's just kind of your basic fences and.
Springtime work.
Uh, spring kind of time stuff, reciting, so I will have uh, twelve months.
And I would tell folks out there, if you're going to do a project, you'll, you as the project owner, I better rock call in City Hall and ask them about it, then thinking your contractor's gonna do it. Come and ask, it's easier to ask for permission than it is for forgiveness, especially since we've changed the way we've done our, our permitting system, so. If you're going to, you know, serious, we're talking about, I'm gonna replace the windows in my home, as long as my window replacements are not making the windows smaller or bigger, I'm not required to have a permit. So things like that, roofing always has to have a permit along those lines, so call and ask, the, Tom will get to you as quick as we possibly can, let you know what's going on. Jody, how's life in your world?
Good. Actually, for some reason, because there's so much on the agenda, I guess I thought it wasn't report night, sorry.
Yeah, and I want you guys to know that we have farmed Jody out to call and rent a couple of days to help, they have a new clerk up there, and um. She's able to go up there a couple of days and help, she's gonna get up there half a day this week and help out a little bit. And the sole reason she can do that is, is the fact Tom knows what's going on now, and Tom's got time to take care of some of these things, with the addition of Sean here at our office. So. Um, Councilman Merja. What's happening in your world?
Uh. Not a lot, um, but as a resident nerd in the room, you know, Steve's on the, on the computer, so I.
Was about to be scandalized.
Uh, I'm, I'm a nerd, I'm Pokemon nerd, and uh, the reason I bring that up is we have several new what are called PokeStops, they're points of interest here in Shoto. And I bring that up because if you wanna know what they are, I can get you a list, and if there are ones that you think should be on there, I have the ability.
And this is on the national Pokemon.
This is worldwide.
The internet, okay.
People, so people go to communities, when they're traveling through a community, they will drive through it looking for PokeStops.
I've heard that.
Looking for these things to spin them, which also give a little blurb of information on the point of interest. The, the neat thing about this is it's something that a lot of families do on their trek between Yellowstone and Glacier, is they stop in communities. To catch these creatures and then see what. to catch these creatures and then see the points of interest. So as I said, I bring that up so that if there's somewhere in Shoto that you think should be a point of interest, let me know and we'll see if we can get it put on and maybe it'll cause even more people to stop here in Shoto.
Councilman Merja, can you get me the list and I can put it on our visit Shoto website?
Yes. Yeah.
With the acknowledgement that it's dynamic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Councilman Merja, Councilman Diakos, this is my surprise look. For you guys, okay? Anything else?
Uh, none this time.
Councilman Howard. Thank you for your service again.
Not too much going on.
You're not going to talk about your chili feed on set?
Okay.
Sorry.
The death banker, the opportunities bank is putting on a chili feed to raise funds for the fire hall. Um, the biggest thing we're looking at right now are air packs. Um, we have I want to say six years left in our life expectancy on those. And for those twelve packs that we have, we're looking for almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Figure about ten thousand nine six hundred dollars of, and that's what they call a CBA pack.
Yeah. So it's kind of what, well, now I guess we're still kind of talking about the addition. I still working on drawing. So we're a ways away from that. I guess we want to get going something pretty quick, at least get the generator hooked up. Part of the pad port, maybe. So.
Councilman D.
A couple of things. This Thursday is the chamber after hours at the, uh, new location of Copper Creek Coffee. I know Brian's excited to see everyone. Um, and then let's see, that was this Thursday. Um, I'm excited because our city staff and I, and I think you, Mr. Mayor are going to be doing some training for Unicode. It's already live on our website. That's up and running. Uh, we'll be having, uh, information, uh, training for, for those of us who will be accessing it, uh, the week after. Um, and then the end of the month, which is rapidly approaching, May first is the kickoff of the dinosaur museum, uh, opening for the spring. Um, so hope everyone will head up to Bynum in May and, and check that out when they're open.
Um, from the mayor's desk, it's, it's been good. It's been hectic. Um, uh, there are days when I think this should be a full-time position. And there are days that I thank to God, it's not a full-time position, not probably not as much as Tom, Jody and Sean. I think it's not a full-time position. We are, and I shouldn't say we, I said, I, I should, I'll, I'll rephrase that to I am. I want our community to understand as we look at these changes and then we look at these proposals for infrastructure that we are literally fixing a hundred years worth of problems. Problems that if previous administrations dating back to the fifties would have spent a hundred thousand dollars a year maintaining, we wouldn't be in a twenty million dollar remedy over a ten year period of time. We would be significantly less than that. Um, I gotta say, our public works guys have just been going great guns with our, with the cleaning of sewers. And as we're cleaning throughout the community, we'll reach out to those parts of town and let folks know. So we don't catch you in an awkward time that we're sewer jetting. Um, we've been over in the park cleaning up stumps, uh, with our stump grinder. We've water samples, stuff like that. I, I can't keep up with everybody. Um, I can try, but that's not going to help. Uh, we had a great, I want to thank the city staff for what we did for the, what they did for the egg hunt over the weekend. Thank the fire department for bringing down the new truck down there for everyone to get a chance to look at too. Um, I still think it should be Bulldog one, excuse me. And then, um, we'll go from there. We're going through some hiccups with the post office when it comes to our billing cycles. Um, we usually, we take our bills across the street and they would just process them there and put them in your mailboxes. That's not happening anymore. They're being shipped to Great Falls, be processed and sent back. And in the process, we were losing stunningly some bills. And so there are people out there that are probably going to see late notices or late fees. And, uh, it'll be difficult for us to waive those things because of.
If you, if you haven't got your bill, call.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, if you haven't got your, yeah, it is, if you haven't done a recall and reach out, because we'll be reading meters again Monday. Tom's looking at the calendar, twenty five. Yeah. So, um, while I'm in most mornings from eight to nine and most afternoons from four to five, please feel free to reach out to me. Here it is out. And if it's on the internet, it's got to be true. Five nine oh three oh three one is my cell phone. I will take your call and we'll, we will go from there. Uh, pleasant or unpleasant, I will take your call and we'll have a conversation. It's, I'm glad to be served with these four individuals here because it's made our jobs easier. But folks, we feel the pain just as much as you do as we're looking at some of these expansion systems. So if you have questions, talk, call us, talk to us, reach out, have a cup of coffee, whatever, and we'll answer questions best we possibly can. Anything, Phyllis, Jill, anything for the good of the order?
Just thanks for not kicking the can down the road like all the previous administrations have done.
I don't want to.
Because nobody wants to raise rates.
I can only imagine what it would be in five more years if we didn't do these things right now. Rich, anything for us?
Uh, just what, what you're talking about, about Midwest, but I was glad I was here to listen to it. I would like to get on city water. I'm tired of hearing my pump kick on and off, on and off all the time.
Um, yes, Steve.
Either way.
A quick update on.
They said it's going to be no cost, you know?
Yeah, a quick update on the, um, sewer project. What did we figure they were at? Councilman Howard? Where's your, your notes?
The cost?
Or, how far along are they percentage wise?
Eighteen, well, no, so.
Councilman Howard has the floor.
So I got a, I looked them at as a little different. Mike did this for me just before the meeting, but so this is kind of how I was taught to look at things. So on percent of lineage, lineal feet completed were twelve point one percent. And manholes were thirteen point nine percent. So overall, you know, you can get this percentage of complete into the cost, but the way I like to look at it is we have X number of days on the contract and we've used eighteen percent of those days already. And none of our figures add up that high yet. So if you're looking at the days to complete, we're running behind schedule.
We had our first in-person meetings today with the contractors and the engineer on site, and we will continue to have those on every Wednesday. Tuesday, sorry. Um, it was, I, well, I wanted to be here, but I got dragged away, dragged, dragged away for another meeting. Um, it was very productive in talking to Mike and talking to Colette. And we will, uh, have those weekly and I will hope that we can continue to update you guys on our bi-monthly meetings as to what percentage we are, where we're at. Tentatively now, the project's end date is July twenty ninth.
So you, you said weekly? You're going to get to have meetings weekly?
No, we, we'll be weekly and I'll update on our, on our weekly meeting.
No, I know. I just, that's awesome.
Yeah, we, in the contract, we have in-person meetings.
It's pretty standard.
Yeah, so. If there's nothing else, you guys, we went longer tonight than we have in the past. I want to thank everybody and we're good until
tenth of May.
Ten, May ten. Yep, candidate form tomorrow night.
All the candidates, the Democratic and Republican tickets would be there for House District Seventeen, Public Service Commission District Five, and of course, Tito County Commissioner District Two.
Are you going to submit to now or just?
Steve and I are working on that, right?
Yep.
That we're going to try to streamline on.
Facebook.
Campus Facebook.
Okay.
Starts at six thirty and we're going to try to be done by eight thirty. I know that sounds long, but with six P S C candidates, three house district candidates and four county commissioner candidates.
There'll be a cookie break. There'll be a cookie break.
Um, yeah, we'll make sure there's a cookie break, but there won't be home cooked cookies this time because my legs just got too bad. Sorry, Rex's will be the thing.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Reach out if you need us. Good night.
Night.